And start this meeting of October 11th, 2022, we're going to start it off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So the public can access, can also access this meeting via WebEx technology. The Burlington School Committee will hear public comments in person and virtually. Meetings are also broadcast live on Burlington Cable Access TV and video audio recordings are being made. This meeting hearing of the Burlington School Committee will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this meeting in person. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item in this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance. In order to access the meeting, code is 2339-015-9428. Password is Tuesday. I ask that if anyone is speaking remotely, to please identify yourself. It'd be great if you would enter your name as well when you log in. If you speak, please state your name, and while you speak, we ask that you please turn on your camera. So the first item up is we actually are having an executive session because we have special guests here from the police department. So we're going to go into executive session from 7:00 PM to 7:30 PM. Under Massachusetts General Laws, MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices to reconvene in open session. We're also going to approve the executive minutes from September 13th, 2022, and September 20th, 2022, and then this is the annual security meeting. The school committee will only return to public session to continue our normal meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, I'm going to take roll call. Ms. Masario?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Ms. Monaco? I'm an aye. So I move that we go into executive session. And just a reminder that comments and statements are limited to three minutes. And what I'll do is I will try to alternate between live audience and anyone who's remote, going back and forth for anyone who would like to speak. And again, just a reminder for those who are online, I did make a statement earlier saying that if you are going to speak, please identify yourself. Please make sure your name is entered so that we can see it on the television, and I ask that you please turn on your camera as well so we can see you. All right, anyone out in the live audience who would like to approach? And if you could please identify yourself and...
Wilson Herrera, I'm a resident of Burlington. First time in this head of Wadi, so I'll try to make it brief and concise. The issue or the topic that I want to address is banners, senior banners that have typically been traditionally...
I apologize, I'm sorry. You're looking at the microphone. Now you can, the mic can never move.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
And get up close to it too, please.
Yes, I will. Okay. To Wilson Herrera, resident of Burlington, the topic I want to bring up is senior banners. Banners where you have a picture of your son, daughter, and traditionally, these banners in this school, this precedence that we can refer to, have been hung up on the school property on the fence, and it's a way to recognize your student for the four years they spend in this school, accomplishing all the things that they do, their efforts, their hard work. I think it's a great thing to do, not only for them, but for the community, for the kids that look up to these kids as they drive by and they say, hey, I want to be on that wall. So, you know, we're here because we, the parents, I represent the parents of the soccer program. I have a son who's a senior who, you know, has been playing for the school for four years, and we came together as parents to figure out a way to recognize them the way other programs have done in the past. And we spent time and effort and money in getting banners made for our kids. This was paid out of pocket. We were inclusive, including not only the boys' team, but the girls' team as well. They would be here, but unfortunately, it just last minute notice. But their banners came in today, so just so happens, they just chose a different provider. Their banners will go up on the wall. So again, being inclusive. We followed the protocol, meaning we went through the committee or through the administration, through Sean Hart, the administrator, Mr. Hart. I had sent him an email saying, hey, Mr. Hart, we're planning to do this. We see that the banners for the football team are on the wall. We'd like to do the same. I didn't get a response. We proceeded to do getting the banners. We got the banners. Before we hung up the school property, I addressed it through an email to Mr. Mark Sullivan on October 5th specifically. I sent him an email asking for permission. Within 24 hours, next day, next morning, I got an approval. Wilson, Mr. Herrera, you're good to go. Mr. Hart had alerted me that these banners are coming up, so I'm surprised that they're not up already. And I included you, most of you, in the emails that you probably have seen over the course of the day. So I got some parents to help me up. There's 14 seniors this year. It's a pretty senior-heavy class. That night, we hung up the banners on the fence, right next to the football team's banners. The next day, I got rave, if you can imagine, social media. It's where everything's at now. We've been getting all kinds of positive feedbacks, saying, this is amazing. It's beautiful. We have a student, we have a student who is from Italy, is being sponsored by a resident. And the only way that individual gets recognized is through a photo, through social media, all the way to Italy. And that individual was so thankful that their son was on that wall, they're like, I'm so glad Burlington's the place my son's at. I can't see him any day. I miss him, but thank you. That's the positive image that we wanted to portray to our kids, and not just for soccer, but for every other program that exists. And a lot of these people are here today from different programs. So, you know, we were happy with all that, but within hours, I started seeing some comments and I got some texts saying, hey, we're being told that the banners need to come down. Rather than chase rumors, I called our coach directly, just because he's connected to some degree to our students and to our players, and I said, hey, Mr. Dean, any insight as to why this is, why we're being asked less than 24 hours after getting approval to take them down? He, one, we thought it was improper for Mr. Hart to reach out to a coach that has nothing to do with the situation. He's a coach, he coaches our students, and that coach is being put in a position to now ask parents of seniors to take these banners down. One, it came from the wrong person. The approval I got was from Mr. Mark Sullivan. Why is Mrs. Sean Hart then now saying, take them down? This is why we're here. So we were very puzzled, obviously very upset. Parents were wondering why, because we were not given a reason why they needed to come down. Since then, we've heard the complaints, we've heard the issues, all the issues that we believe we can address in an amicable way. But until we're given that opportunity, it's difficult to just say, get those banners down, and then ride off to the sunset. So we collectively as a group, and I apologize for the time, we collectively as a group decided that it was best to address these points unified, which is what you saw this morning. You saw me sending an email as a group, as a group of the parents, as a parent and representative, and we all agree on it. We had a meeting on this last night for an hour. We debated this, we discussed it, we came to a unified conclusion that this is the best thing to do for our kids. Three, okay. Fast forward real quick, email went out, points were made. It took three, two to three times before we got to where we felt we were making progress, where they said banners will stay out for the rest of the season, we will collaborate with a number of people from the boosters and different organizations, sports, clubs, what have you, and we're very happy with that. So we have made progress since last night to this morning. So I'm here to just alert the committee so that you're aware, and we would like to continue to work with Mr. Hart and Mrs. Sullivan. I'm a little concerned, to be quite honest with you, past experience, and I can give you more insight when I have time. Okay, I just want this on the agenda at some point or another. We'll work with the committee, we'll work with the administration, we'll come up with a solution collectively as a group. We want to be heard, and thank you for your time. That's really it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anybody out on the web who would like to comment or participate in public participation?
Nikki Cadillac.
Okay. Ms. Cadillac?
Hi, hi, great, I'm here. Can you see me and hear me?
I can hear you. No, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
It's coming out of a computer.
Can you please speak again?
Sure, can you hear me?
We don't hear you at the moment.
I can hear her.
Thanks, bye.
It's coming out somewhere.
Say something again?
Please speak again.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great, hi. I'm Nikki Cadillac. I am a parent of a student at Fox Hill, and I'm Marshall Simons, and also a town meeting member. I was just kind of wanted to express my concern about not hearing as a parent about the departure of Mr. Patrick Larkin and Mr. Ray Porch. I was, I sort of, of course, knew at some point that those two individuals had departed from the district, but I don't remember receiving any formal communication from the district about the departure of these two people. And since that's a pretty significant portion of the district leadership, I just feel like it would be something that I would want to know as a parent. And also considering Mr. Porch's, his position was such a point of contention in the community, and, excuse me. Considering that the position of the DEI director in the schools was such a point of contention in the community, and considering there was so much controversy around Mr. Larkin before he left the district, I just feel like the silence only leaves room for rumors. And so there's a lot of stories that people tell each other and ourselves, and I really would have appreciated some more clear communication, both with respect to the departure of these two individuals and also what the plan is for the future, particularly because as a town meeting member, I know that it was a very laborious process, not only to get that DEI position funded, but also to create a job description and conduct interviews and things like that. So I would really like to know as a parent and as a town meeting member what the plans are for that position and how the next individual that's placed in that position will be set up for success.
Thank you, Ms. Cadillac.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else from the audience who'd like to approach, please? Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Courtney McDonald, parent of one graduate of BHS and two current seniors, also on the boys' soccer team. I just wanted to reiterate one point. While I'm very happy that after a lot of back and forth, we were able to reach a resolution with Mr. Sullivan about keeping the current banners up, and I hopefully, hopefully that extends to the other fall sports who haven't yet put their banners up. I am equally concerned about moving forward and what the policy will be for winter sports, spring sports, and people coming up next year. Mr. Sullivan has indicated he is willing to meet with the boosters, but I think it needs to be stronger than that. We need parent collaboration and a true good faith effort to work with the parents to develop the policy, not sort of a top-down, you know, decision. I think parents have a different perspective on some of this and understand in some ways what's tenable and what's not. Putting banners up each game may be not as tenable as he may think it is. So I just want to make sure and reiterate that we are, desire and expect good faith collaboration with the parents. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else on the web who would like to participate? No other hands up? Anyone else in the audience? Come on up.
[laughing].
Please identify yourself though, please.
Hi, my name's Michelle Papagno, and I'm here tonight as co-president of the boosters. And first, I would like to say thank you very much, Bob, for returning my message yesterday, Friday. He was very quick when the, as people are calling it, Bannergate hit Friday. He was very quick to return my message and have a conversation. Also, Sean Hart, we did spend about an hour and a half, the entire second half of the football game, discussing the banners and everything that went on, so thank you for your time. I do appreciate the reply to the email that booster sent out, although I was a little disappointed with it. I would just like to say that I have, as most of you know, I have a couple of children. They play multiple sports, and as a resident, as a former school bus driver that drove by that fence every single day for 15 years, I saw what went up on the fence, how long it stayed up, and when it came down. I was told that the banners only went up for a short amount of time, and then they came down, and that has been past policy, and that is untrue. I was told Friday that no one had permission to put the banners up, and then I was told that they did have permission by the same person. So that was clearly untrue and very confusing. So as the president of the boosters, I would like to just reiterate what was said, that we would like to have a discussion with more than just Mr. Hart, Mr. Sullivan, maybe somebody mentioned putting it on the agenda, but maybe we could get some kind of a group together that maybe has some students in that group, boosters, some coaches, you know, whatever. It's got to be more than just Sean and Mark making a policy that everyone has to then adhere to. The banners, they were Sean's idea to begin with having all seniors represented on that fence. He came to our meeting last spring and said that his vision was to have every senior represented. So boosters, we spent a lot of time and a lot of hours and a lot of conversations and a lot of money to make this, his vision, come to a reality. And I know you guys, this is in the email, and some of you have gotten it, I'm not sure if everyone has seen it. We have also gotten a low price. I mean, I know that football works outside of the boosters. They pay a lot of money for their banners. They did offer chair, the same opportunity to have their banners made. Chair declined because they were too expensive. We found a way to get every senior athlete a banner and put it up on the fence, as Sean had suggested. So then for this to happen Thursday, and soccer told to take theirs down, after I know football's have been up for a month. And last year, when they hit the fence, they did not come down until after the Thanksgiving Day game. So they do not go up for just game day. They never have. And I don't know, I just really, I don't appreciate being lied to. I don't appreciate the confusion surrounding this or the anger, and I'm a little resentful. But going forward, I would love to see some kind of a committee put together and everyone have a voice for our children. Oh, also in closing, we did reach out to Burlington Parents Association of Performing Arts. Thank you, okay. We did reach out to them too. I've spoken with Fadeen, Megan has spoken to her about including their students as well. I would love to see everyone, you mentioned, somebody mentioned robotics and things. I don't know anybody who has a child in that, I don't know any contacts, so if the high school would be willing to work with us, I'm sure our vendor would love to work with them as well, so we can represent every single student. And inside, does somebody mention, inside the field really doesn't work for boys swim? Nobody will see that. And according to the special needs child whose banner is on the fence, he loves the fact that people, now this kid sits on the bench, okay, that people have been coming up to him and mentioning this, and it has made him feel really, really, really good. And I think that every student should be allowed to feel the same way that that young man does. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. And no one on the web still? Anyone else in the audience who'd like to come up? All right. Any comments from the school committee? Ms. Monaco?
I just want to tell you that... I want to tell you that those banners look great. They really do, they look very nice. And I have a gut feeling that this is something that can be worked out, that we can, it almost doesn't seem like we need a school committee policy, but maybe we do, you know, and if we do, we do. But I think we need to work this out and find a way, because there's nothing more exciting for the kids, the seniors, than to see their banners up there. So let's look at moving forward with, with the superintendent, the athletic director, the high school principal, and let's figure this out.
Yes, Ms. Simon?
Yeah, I actually wanted to respond to Ms. Cadillac's comments. As I had hoped to make a comment tonight anyway, and as most people do know, that the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Mr. Raymond Porch has accepted a position in another school district. I want to personally and publicly thank Mr. Porch for all that he brought to our district and all that he did for our students, our staff, and our families, and I wish him the best in his future. We don't usually comment when staff leave, and I think that created some of this silence. But I feel it is really important, as Ms. Cadillac mentioned earlier, to make it clear that this does not end our commitment to equity and inclusion in the Burlington Public Schools. Although it may take time to hire new staff to help us with this work, it is the work of all of us in the district, the school committee, the administration, the staff at all the levels, the students' families. It's the work of all of us to improve the Burlington Public Schools in ways that make sure that all students feel safe and that they belong. Equity work is hard work. We will continue to build the capacity of our staff to ensure that every student will reach their full potential and feel that they belong, no matter where they come from, what their abilities are, and who they are. We will continue to have difficult conversations. We will continue this work that was done for this past year under Mr. Porch's leadership, such as opportunities for student voice, addressing incidents when they happen. I ask that Dr. Conti be sure that the DEI advisory and the advocacy room at the high school, as well as any other student groups, perhaps at the middle school or other schools throughout the district, that they continue their groups and their conversations, and that the students in those groups are supported through this transition. There are other actions that we can begin right now. For example, we could begin to work again on clear incident response protocols. We could reestablish the district equity committee that I don't believe has met since Mr. Porch was here. And definitely, we will continue to celebrate the amazing diversity and worth of all the students, staff, and families in Burlington. The report of the eight-month-long equity audit should be coming to us soon. It is my expectation that it will be reviewed...
Disseminated and used for...
It will be reviewed, disseminated, and used for conversations with all the stakeholders, students, staff, community, families, and that we will make a plan of action. We should integrate the equity audit findings into our plan for success metrics and action plans. Although we will be voting on the plan for success tonight, as Dr. Conti has said, it's a work in progress, and at any point, I feel we should be integrating any findings from the equity audit. I know so many community members and teachers, staff, and students are committed to our diversity, equity, and inclusion work. I'd like to have a conversation with the school committee about our commitment and our plans to continue the DEI work. I'd like to request that we put this on a future agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. All right. And I was going to say, the only other comment I was going to say is I called home when I saw the pictures up on the side of the fence. I was so impressed with that when I came in, so thank you very much. All right, so we will now move on.
Ms. Chair, may I?
Yes, yes.
I want to echo a lot of what Ms. Simon said and reiterate the commitment that the district has, and also reiterate her request to have it on a future agenda. And also, the, so many ideas that came from the speakers tonight about banners, I think we should have that on a future agenda as well. Even if it doesn't rise, as Ms. Monaco mentioned, it might not rise to a school committee policy, just to have a discussion about it, I think would be valuable.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Monaco?
Yeah, it might, Carl, I don't, I don't, I'm not going to say that it shouldn't be a policy, I don't know. Yeah, right, but just in agreement with other members, I want to wish Mr. Porch and Mr. Larkin well in their future endeavors.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go on to the next item, which is information and reports. Dr. Conti. Subcommittee reports first.
Again, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank the Education Subcommittee of Ways and Means. Mr. Moran is the chair. I'm not sure that we've met since town meeting, have we? Where they supported our warrant article unanimously in the subcommittee, and then the larger Ways and Means unanimously supported the warrant article that allows us to enter into a six-year contract with the publisher of our middle school social studies curriculum. So again, that would be my subcommittee report. So again, thank town meeting, and Mr. Moran, thank you for championing that effort.
You're welcome.
Do we have a student representative tonight?
Not me.
Just trying to find out, I don't want to miss anyone. I don't know if anyone was online either, but I thought I would ask. Any other subcommittee reports? Mr. Foss?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick update about the town-wide DEI subcommittee. We met last week. We are rapidly approaching our first year of existence and kind of compiling the fourth quarterly report to present to the select board. We're meandering toward another working session with the select board, we had one a few weeks ago. But in that vein of the fourth quarterly report, some of the things that we're highlighting are the meetings we've had with other committees and boards around town, including the meeting that you and I had with Dr. Addison Reed. And it reminded me that one of the things that we discussed was possibly amending or updating our mission statement or our equity statement, and we had mentioned doing that at one of the, or at a theoretical, at that point, it was theoretical training for the committee. And I was just wondering if you or, or Dr. Conti had any updates about scheduling that. I haven't seen anything, so I assume that we're still working on it, but if we could try to get that scheduled, I think it would be valuable.
Through the chair?
Yes.
So, Mr. Foss, we wanted to develop sort of the planning for success document first, and then we've, I've certainly been, I have a scheduled meeting with Dr. Armonte Jackson, who has done a lot of the equity work with the State Superintendent Association, and so we're trying to get on her calendar, and then we'd like to sort of talk about an agenda, and I think if there's a particular task, like updating a vision, mission, or equity statement, I think then having someone like that be a facilitator, if she's available, and do some training around that would be kind of what we're shooting for. So again, I don't have a date yet, I'm not sure of her availability, but again, the, my experience with her and the feedback from the Superintendent Association has been very positive.
Could you repeat her name, please? I'm sorry.
Dr. Armonte Jackson, and she's from, out of Harvard, and I'm blanking on the name of her group, but I will forward that to the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other subcommittee updates? Ways and Means, Ms. Moran?
I do not have an update at this time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other announcements? We said we would add that at the last meeting. I think Martha kind of made hers already, but anyone else have any other announcements? Okay, we'll move on. So the next item is learning... So the next item is learning, equity, and thriving. Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just looking for a second reading vote on the Planning for Success document and my goals for the 2022-2023 school year. The Planning for Success document is obviously a three-year document. It fulfills the state requirement that the district have a district improvement plan. This is a plan that the schools will also be structuring their school improvement plans for that you'll see sometime in the wintertime. And as Ms. Simon said, it can certainly be amended and updated. It's meant to be sort of a living document that tries to keep us moving in the same direction. So again, I'd like to recommend that you approve the Planning for Success document for the following three years.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I would like to comment that I think it's very thorough, and I really appreciate it. And I do think there are things we can add as we go along. When we get our equity audit, I'm hoping that we'll be able to add either, both objectives and goals, but also metrics perhaps, that will be more clear after we get the equity audit, I hope. But I think that it's a very good plan for us to be working toward. Thank you. And all the people who put their parts of it together as well.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and we've had discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm in favor, so five zero zero. Okay, next item is the MCAS report update.
I think, Madam Chair, the.
MASC, sorry.
I'm sorry.
I don't have to put my glasses on. MASC report update.
The report and then the delegate assembly. So the next two agenda items are the committees.
Is that about the policy review? Is that what that was supposed to refer to?
Massachusetts Association of School Committees.
Right. I thought that might have been something that was for the upcoming MASC, MASs conference. But if not, I can give you a policy update. So Ms. Fabry, thank you very much, has provided all of our current existing policies to MASC for their review. I think they also asked for copies of our handbooks. Miriam, is that correct? And so they have all of the information that they requested from the districts. And that did take a tremendous amount of time. And we scanned everything in, so they have everything in sort of a digital format. And so we are answering questions as they come up from MASC. And then, again, just to remind everyone, at some point, they will make recommendations for any updates to current existing policy. I think they will also identify areas where we don't have policies, where we may need policy. And then they will provide a, I want to say, sort of a baseline language that they, comes out of MASC to, if there's, if they recognize that we're missing a policy in this area, they will say, here's our base policy for that area. And then the committee would have that conversation moving forward. So if that's, that's my update of where we are. And again, Ms. Fabry has done all of the work, and so I just want to thank her publicly for providing all of that information to MASC.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. Any comments, questions?
I have a question. So we have a delegate assembly?
Oh, that's. I can, I can address that if you'd like.
Yeah, I connected both on that, so I apologize. So again, I think the, the school committee usually elects a delegate for someone who attends the joint conference coming up in November. So that's the background.
So are we voting on a delegate or sending someone? Or someone wants to go?
Madam Chair, if I could fill in a little. Yeah, the, the conference that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees holds every year does have a delegate assembly where they vote on resolutions that they are, work on and promote, promote legislation and things like that. And Ms. Mosardo and I are both going to be attending the conference this year. And I'd like to nominate Ms. Mosardo to be our delegate representative. But it's just that we needed to vote on that so we can send them a form that says who is our delegate before October 20th. So that's why we put it on the agenda. Thank you.
Right.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So anyone else who?
Anyone else who would like to be a delegate? I can't take the time, so. Much as I'd like to. So anyway, so we have a motion, we have a second, and there's no additional discussion. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm in favor, so five zero zero. Now is the 2022 MCAS results.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to invite Ms. Purchase up. And I'd like to publicly recognize and thank her for her efforts. She really helped me. She was putting together a presentation for the middle school as well and offered to expand some of her presentation to include the district. So we, we've done this presentation. So again, Carrie, thank you very much. And, and as we said with our Planning for Success document, and Ms. Simon mentioned metrics, what we'd like to do is have more predictable metrics for the school committee. So October is typically when we get the MCAS results. And they were, they were released to the public, I think, just a couple of weeks ago. So we are going to summarize those. We're coming out of a two-year pandemic, and I think you'll see the impact of that. But it's probably time for us to reintroduce MCAS and some of the background to committee members. Although we have some people like Mr. Foss, who I'm sure could do the presentation. We just want to make sure we're, we're reviewing, we're reviewing that. So again, under our learning objective, this is one of the metrics that we discussed introducing. So with that, again, Ms. Purchase is, will do the presentation. I believe you had the presentation in your packet. So if there's any questions that come up. But I'm sure I will interrupt her at some point through her presentation.
I hope that he interrupts me at some point during my presentation. Okay, so thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. It is truly a privilege. So starting off with, you know, just a quick overview, and what is MCAS? What does it assess? So Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System is what MCAS stands for. And it assesses student performance on the Massachusetts Curriculum Frameworks in the areas of mathematics, English Language Arts, science, technology, and engineering. All students in public schools or schools receiving public funds participate, starting in grades three through eight. And that's math and ELA. And then students in grades five and eight participate in the science, technology, and, excuse me, engineering MCAS. In high school, it becomes a graduation requirement. Our students participate in the biology exam, MCAS, in grade nine. And then students in grade 10, again, participate in math and English Language Arts. So I think that while the MCAS gives us information about individual students and their progress, I think it is also a, often a better tool to really help us look at the what we're teaching, our curriculum, and looking at it from a lens of alignment. So with the frameworks.
Excuse me for interrupting. Through the chair. Is it possible to have this up on the screen and available to people who may be watching on Bcat?
Yeah, that's what he was working on.
Because it's a lot of information, and a lot of it is written down. So it will be available later. Okay. And maybe will we, can we put this presentation on the website afterward, Dr. Conti?
Oh, absolutely.
So if people missed some of that and want to go back and look at it, it will be available. So I'm sorry to interrupt.
These also need to be embedded in our minutes, too.
Okay, yeah.
Just so you know, any kind of presentation needs to be embedded in the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
So, let me know when you're ready, Mr. Kuna. Okay, I'm on the MCAS history. There, I'm right there. Good, good job. Okay. So really quickly, I'm not going to read through the entire timeline. But we have, it occurred to me that we are coming up on the 25th anniversary of MCAS, that the first MCAS was administered in 1998. It has gone through a couple of iterations, most recently the Next Generation MCAS in 2017. I think that's significant for Burlington's participation because prior to 2017, when districts had the option to participate in the PARC assessment or in MCAS, Burlington opted to, to participate in PARC. So when we look at our historical data, it goes back to 2017, which is where we, you know, the 2000, excuse me, the Next Generation MCAS started. So just a couple definitions of terms. So one way that we look at MCAS data is through an achievement lens. And there are four different categories: not meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, meeting expectations, and exceeding expectations. As we go through tonight, you'll see that we often combine the meeting expectations and exceeding expectations as the metric of students demonstrating proficiency. I think it's also really important to notice that in any one of these categories, there's a wide range of proficiency levels. So, you know, using partially meeting expectations means that you're making that progress. And you might be on the higher end of that, 490, which means you're, you're a little bit closer to that, that mark versus being kind of at the lower end. So that's something, as we look into data, that's another important piece to look at. More important metric, I think, and a more telling metric, is the student growth percentile, SGP. That is a statistic that really demonstrates what one year's worth of growth is for a student. So summary, they take all of the students who, say, on the fourth-grade ELA MCAS score, 500, that's their scale score, they make that an academic peer group. And then in fifth grade, when they take the ELA assessment again, they look at that growth for that academic peer group, and then they, they come up with a growth percentile. So average growth is that, or typical growth is that 40 to 59, right in that, that range. And so that's something that when we look at the achievement data, that's one lens. But then looking at the growth percentile can be another really important metric.
Carrie, may I just?
Please.
Jump in as well. And again, we don't need to be psychometricians, but there are norm-reference tests that are like the SAT. And those are tests that look at national norms. And then they would rank students sort of against, against a norm. And then there are criterion reference tests, which are tests that measure students' performance based on an identified group of standards. MCAS is a criterion reference test. So the way I like to think about it, if you think there's a mountain of knowledge that our kids have to learn, that's the criterion. And the MCAS assessment measures where on the mountain the students are. Obviously, if you're all not familiar with mountain climbing, where you, where you start your climb is very important. If you're already at the top of the mountain and you already know the knowledge and you get a perfect score, we want to celebrate you being at the top of the mountain. But it may not demonstrate growth that others need to have. If someone starts midway, or if someone starts far below, that's why the growth metric is so important for us. And looking at that, students who have to make up ground, because we're going to be looking at some potential learning loss or gaps or whatever the term is that is currently being utilized, some of our students have to learn at a faster rate if they're ever going to catch up. That's why growth is, is so, is so important. So again, when we look at growth, please look at that in reference to a criterion reference experience, which is sort of the mountain that I, that I talked about. And we need, we need to know where students start. And, and that's why MCAS is sort of a terrible measure of instructional sort of excellence or performance because a student could make a year and a half worth of growth and still not, not meet their expectations on a criterion reference test. But that's a, boy, a heck of a year for the student and a heck of a year for that student's educators. So, so that's all. So again, sorry to be so in the weeds, but this is not, this is not, it's not a norm-reference test.
He painted a much prettier picture with the mountain. So just some statewide trends. As we, we mentioned, we're coming off of two-plus years of disrupted education. As, as I was thinking about this, our third graders who took the assessment for the first time last spring were first graders in March of 2020. So I think that's really important as we look at this data and this information is that those were situations that were outside of our, our children's kind of control and certainly out of our educators' control as well. Statewide, some things that they've noticed compared with this year, the 2022 scores and the 2021 scores. And we did participate in MCAS in 2021. It was one session as opposed to two sessions. So it wasn't the same administration as, as it was in 2022. So we're not necessarily, there's, there's achievement data to look at, but we're not necessarily going to compare one to the other. But statewide, math scores increased this past spring. ELA scores declined, early literacy challenges, and then lower writing scores. But when you think about how you, you teach and support writing, that iterative process based on the disruption, that's not surprising and something that we need to address. And then our ST, statewide STE, the science, technology, and engineering scores, increased slightly. Learning recovery will be a multiple-year kind of effect. So it's, no one is expecting that we're going to be in the same exact space. It's something that we'll need to kind of continue to monitor. And then another data point statewide is student absenteeism. And I think one of the things that we can say is that it matters when kids are in school, and it matters when teachers are in school. And I think that, that this is something that, that we need to look. And again, outside of many people's kind of control over the last couple of years.
So again, just, I think a data point that I was told was, and I'll check it, but I think the state reported that chronic absenteeism, so that's 10 or more absences for a student, was up 138% over the two years of the pandemic. So, so those scores did increase, but they're not the type of scores that we, we wanted.
Probably sick.
100%. They could have been out. They could have been quarantined. But again, I think, as Ms. Purchase said, I think the lesson here is being in school matters and being in front of a high-quality educator matters. And so, and so I think that's the, that's what you're seeing resulting in the scores across the state.
So we're going to start with mathematics and looking. And we are looking at kind of each grade level and looking at a three-year span. So starting at 2019, which is our pre-pandemic mark, but then the 2021 score and then the 2022 score. In all categories, math, ELA, science, technology, and engineering, we are above the state in terms of partially, or excuse me, in terms of meeting or exceeding expectations. So I think that that is an important piece to keep in mind. So I'm not going to speak to each one of these slides. I think that, you know, certainly if there's questions or, or, you know, if you'd like to go into a little deeper, look, please let Dr. Conti know, and we can, we can definitely get more information for you. But you can see, you know, for example, in third-grade math, our pre-pandemic scores in our post-pandemic scores aren't that far off. There, that, there's some different kind of data points throughout the presentation where there, there are some different places where there might be a little bit more of a gap pre and post-pandemic. But certainly something that we need to continue to look at. In fourth-grade math, the Burlington students, 55% of Burlington students met or exceeded the expectations versus the state's 43% in fourth grade. Again, fifth grade, we had 49% of our students meeting or exceeding expectations versus the state's 36%. Similarly, in sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, and then in eighth, excuse me, in 10th grade, 56% of students met or exceeded the expectations. Just as an important point to look at that growth percentile. So you can see here, it's just a summary of the achievement of each of the grade levels, but then also compared to the growth percentile. So that's the, kind of where they, where they were in terms of their growth. All of our students had typical growth based on that, their student growth percentile. The next slide.
So again, typical growth is typically a year's worth of growth in a year's time. But again, as we stated, if you're behind and you're growing at a year's rate in a year, then you're going to remain behind consistently. So can our challenge, I'm happy everyone is growing, but one of the things we really have to look at much more granularly for individual students is the growth of some of our students who need to make up ground on the, on the mountain.
So the, the next slide looks at some of our subgroup data. And this is where, again, we see that typical growth, but we start to see a little bit more of that achievement gap in terms of different subgroups not meeting with the same level of proficiency on that mountain. So this is, again, something that individuals. So, this is, again, something that individual schools and grade levels will need to dig into a little bit as well. Any questions on math, or do you want me to just keep plugging along? Okay, I'll keep plugging along. So, English Language Arts, again, that was an area where the state saw a little bit less growth this year, and that writing is an area of focus. And I would say that, based on kind of the initial look into this data, that that's the case for Burlington as well, in terms of an opportunity for growth. Speaking for the middle school, I know that many of our teachers identified that last year, last spring, you know, even without this, or like, you know, that's the impact that the, you know, from, one of the impacts from the pandemic was the student writing piece. So, that's something that is a focus area for the middle school, definitely, but I think you'll see it as a focus area across the district. So, third-grade reading scores, and again, the state saw an impact on the lower kind of elementary foundational reading skills. In Burlington, we had 52% of third graders meeting or exceeding expectations versus the state's 44%. In fourth grade, it was 49% of meeting and exceeding for Burlington students versus 38% statewide. And again, very similarly across the board for fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade. And as you look in this, you're, you know, really, you know, I again encourage questions or places you'd like us to dig a little deeper. I think the, continue to see some similarities, again, you know, in those 2019 scores in some of our post-pandemic scores. And then, historically, grade 10, 66% of Burlington students met or exceeded expectations versus the state's 58. And then, just a summary again of that growth. And so, across all grade levels, typical growth. And just as a point of reference, third grade doesn't have growth because it's their first year participating, so there's none of those academic peers. Similarly, the subgroup data for English Language Arts, again, shows some gaps in the achievement, but again, we saw, you know, fairly typical growth across all subgroups. And this just really begs the question in terms of the starting point, and as Dr. Conti said, where, how are we meeting the needs of students who are starting in different spots?
So, again, Ms. Purchase. Ms. Purchase, one of the statistics in the ELA subgroup data that struck me is our English learning population, which we went over. Again, we clearly have a need to have more students proficient in terms of their achievement on ELA, but you can see the average SGP is that they are learning and they are growing. So, it might be when the students are coming to us in terms of our newcomer population, their proficiency in English, obviously accessing the curriculum is a challenge. And I think this committee and Mr. Morin Ways and Means has always been very supportive when we've had to add our ELL staff to make sure that we're addressing student needs and we're allowing them to access the curriculum that we have. So, you can, again, you can see the learning gap in particular, again, I think with our English language learners.
So, our last assessment data to look at is the Science, Technology, and Engineering. So, here, we do not have growth data. It's an assessment that's given every three years, and it covers the grade span, or the, excuse me, the curriculum frameworks for those three years. So, fifth grade, and I believe that 2019 was the first year that the next-generation STE test was given in response to new frameworks in 2016. So, our fifth graders, district-wide, 49% met or exceeded expectations, and 43% statewide. In eighth grade, 44% versus 42% statewide in terms of meeting and exceeding. That's typically, just kind of historically, you know, there's, in the Science, Technology, and Engineering eighth-grade assessment, there's usually a bigger kind of gap there. And I think that we are right now, just from a curriculum standpoint, we're implementing new resources that we're hopeful that, you know, that we'll see in a couple of years should have that impact as we continue to implement them. And then, our ninth-grade biology assessment was 62% of students meeting and exceeding versus the state's 45, which I think is something to really be proud of. So, the subgroup data, again, very similar as ELA and math. And then, I think that the important thing is, what do we do with the data, and what are next steps? You know, we're providing a very, you know, kind of like broad-stroke overview of what that data is. There are many more layers to it, and it tells a story, and again, I think it tells a story beyond the individual student, and certainly is one measure, but we have other data sources that give us information about where students are currently and how to best plan for instruction for the students who are sitting in front of us. So, some next steps at the school levels is school-based teams, looking at results by grade level, doing item analysis, looking at what types of items that we succeeded with, where were some of our challenges, and then looking at the results by standards, and really kind of digging in. And that's where I think that the what we're teaching, and are we aligned with the frameworks, and what the intended frameworks are. I think we are aligned, but are we, you know, are we meeting those expectations, and do we have the same expectations? I think it's really important that when we look at this, that we look at the strengths that came out, because there were definitely some highlights throughout in terms of areas where we excelled and that we did well, and we should maintain those practices. This is, you know, not something that we need to throw everything out and start new. This is about continuous growth, so identifying our strengths, but then also identifying those opportunities for growth. And I think, you know, one of the things that we'll look at at the middle school level specifically, and I would encourage everyone to do, is find one or two areas where we think that, you know, we can really focus in from a curricular instruction standpoint that we think are going to positively impact student learning outcomes. Not address everything, but just one or two things. And then, as I said, we have a lot of information on where our students are currently, and we need to see, you know, is that, is there alignment there, and what can we do with that data so that we are supporting our students that are sitting in front of us and meeting them where they are, and making sure that we're giving them what they need. From a district level, I think that next steps will include looking at the elementary schools, looking, again, results by grade levels, item analysis, results by standards. And then, I think, and Dr. Conti can talk a little bit more, but I do think that there's a real opportunity here to start looking at the alignment of our curriculum, what we're teaching with the state frameworks through a curriculum review process.
So, again, in the Planning for Success document, we've mentioned the curriculum review process, sort of K-12, having that be very public, transparent, asking for feedback, and having that take multiple years to make sure that, again, what we're teaching is aligned with the state frameworks, and that we're sort of providing the right, the content that the state is expecting us to provide. So, I think that is one step in looking at how our students are performing. I do think there are other areas that are here. We're using a new tool by a company called Open Architects, which allows us to do item analysis, to look at how individual questions were answered at the state level, how they were answered at Burlington's level, how they were answered by different groups of Burlington students, and how they were answered by individual students. So, I think we can really use this data helpfully. One of the issues with MCAS, as you all know, it's not a great learning tool for us, because the students took the assessment last spring. We're already into this year, so we have other assessments. Again, Carrie mentioned on a prior slide where we're looking at iReady, for instance, and in Symphony, we're doing that three times a year, so we could look at, and those are norm-reference, but we could look at those sort of fall, winter, spring, and we're looking at putting that information in a more user-friendly way, because I would say that would be, that data would allow teachers in sort of real-time to make adjustments to their teaching. So, MCAS doesn't really allow us to do that. It's more of a district perspective and looking at our overall curriculum. So, again, the last two years have seen, I think, the one conclusion we reached, sort of could make, is kids being in school is important, and so we'll continue to stress that for both teachers and students. And then, again, we need to look at our gaps to make sure all students are succeeding. Again, part of our planning for success in our work is to make sure we're not just looking globally at statistics, that we're looking at them by student group, and you can see that we have that information here, and we'll be discussing that, because the growth in certain student populations is going to need to be higher if they're going to catch up over time. And so, I think that that's a commitment that we're making and that we'll continue to make. So, I never like stressing MCAS too much, but I think it's something, it's a tool that we have, and I think it's important. In October, we present the results to you all, especially if we're asking for resources that are connected to instruction. This is, again, one measure of some of the outcomes that we want to present. So, again, Ms. Purchase, thank you very much for assisting and helping put this all together and for the presentation. Certainly answer any questions.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you very much for your presentation. I really appreciate that. Any questions or comments, Ms. Masardo?
I just have one question. Thank you. I really liked the presentation, totally helpful, and this is more of just a question in general, but are we able to slice the data against a more, a better benchmark than just the state, like our socioeconomic peers, like the Middlesex League, or the North Shore, like a little bit more peer benchmarking versus just the entire state?
Again, the results are public, so we could certainly look. I'm not sure we would get as granular as we can, but we would look, we could certainly look at other communities, other towns. But again, I would say that's not the purpose of this assessment, and it's not what this assessment is designed for, even though that's what people use it for. So, I think we have to be a little bit careful about making comparisons. I understand what you're saying, but again, it's not a norm-reference test, so I would really need to know where other students are starting their journey, and I think that's where one of the things where the growth percentile almost makes more sense for us to look at than the ultimate score of the assessment.
No, I mean, I completely understand that, but I think we said many times in the presentation, right, versus the state, versus the state. I think we all know where we are versus the state, but I think it might be a representative sample, it might be a little bit better there.
Okay.
Question.
Ms. Monica?
To both of you, really, nice job, Gary. When you talk about the analysis, I've always wondered about analysis of the questions and answers. So, let's say, for instance, in math, let's say that, I don't even remember which grade you would teach percentages in, but if the students in a particular grade didn't do well on those questions, is that something that would show up in this analysis?
Yes.
So, then you'd go back and make sure that it was taught, I don't know, more often or in a stronger manner, or a slightly different curriculum, or, but so that's...
Yes. Again, I think you could say, we want to make sure it was taught, period.
Yeah.
And then, we can look at how it was taught, and was it effective? We might have other questions that our students did outstanding on, that we would say, okay, is it because we spent, you know, three weeks on that one topic, or did we just do an effective job with it?
Does it get down, I mean, I haven't seen the questions on the test, but say, the Language Arts, does it get down into the very fine details of things like the verb "to be," for instance, it is "I"?
Oh, yes, but all, like, there will be questions on grammar, but it's also encased. It's really a reading comprehension piece, so it's, there may be a, you know, a selection, and I'm happy to grab some released items, and you can look at it. So, it might ask you a grammatical question, because that is a framework, but the, you know, in the umbrella of what that reading selection was. So, it's not just kind of a, you know, question that's all the way out here. Everything, right, like, everything is embedded in response to the literature, and so it's also, you know, comparing to texts. So, it's not just reading and understanding one text, it's also reading, it could be reading a piece of nonfiction and a piece of fiction, and then answering questions on that as well. So, it's a pretty complex piece, but it will ask questions around grammar or language in terms of word sources and using context clues and different strategies in that way.
Yeah. The verb "to be" is always one that, you know, it seems like it's very difficult for kids to learn, and adults as well. I guess what I'm thinking, what I'm feeling is that to have that kind of analysis is really, really valuable, and we should use it to the best of our ability to strengthen various parts of the curriculum. But I also think combining with the planning for success, I think we need to do some heavy-duty looking at curriculum, starting with elementary reading and going all the way through. And anyway, great presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Simon?
Yeah, I have two comments. One is, I'd like to reference on the slides where it talked about the school-based and the district-based analysis. Both of those talk about doing item analysis, and I think that may be what you're looking for, Ms. Monaco. Item analysis, and it's a little easier to explain it with math.
That's what he was talking about.
Yeah. Is, so, it is part of the plan, it looks like, of what we're going to do, and what I think every school district does is they look at the items that many students didn't. Individual students, you need to be able to figure out, did they miss it? But as, if a whole grade didn't do well on that item, then you know we're not instructing it very well, and that's where you can improve the school district. I also have to just add, you commented at the beginning, it's really rare that people talk about what the MCAS initials stand for. They stand for, as you said, the Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System. I was teaching when it began, and they promised us a comprehensive assessment system, and we still have just one test, and it's very disappointing to me. It is one way to measure certain things, but it is not a comprehensive assessment, and it leaves out many other ways that we can be looking at things. And I think we do, in the district, look at other areas, but I just have to put in my two cents about MCAS.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. All right. We'll go ahead and, thank you very much, and no other comments? Okay, so we'll move on to the next item, new hires.
Madam Chair, just, I just learned that someone is here for the DECA trip to Washington, DC, so if we could shift the agenda and, again, I apologize.
I knew they were here for some reason.
I apologize, I didn't know that ahead of time. So, why don't you come on up, and if you're here to ask the school committee to approve this trip?
So, hi, my name is Tommy Gallagher. I'm a senior here at Burlington. Currently, I serve as the co-president of our Burlington's DECA chapter, and I also serve as a state officer for Massachusetts DECA, which is our state association. So, this year, we were requesting to go to the DECA Power Trip, which is not very specific for what it is. But it's held yearly, so it's a conference of over 3,000 students from across the US, but mostly centered around the East Coast of the US and Canada, all DECA members. Last year, it was held in Boston. It was the first time our chapter got the chance to actually attend. We only attended for part of the event, but a good, significant amount of our leadership, including myself and our rising members, were able to not only network with students from across the country, but also attend leadership workshops run by real-world business people, who were able to not only instruct us in different career areas, but also in educational areas and in areas of our competition in DECA. We were able to meet with companies and representatives from different colleges and universities who we got to meet and network with and create connections, and I think it was a fantastic opportunity that we wanted to, again, repeat this year. So, this year, it is actually being held in basically what, it's technically in Reston, Virginia, which is just next to Washington, DC. We were requesting for November 11th through the 13th. We don't have school on any of those days because it's Veterans Day, but we think it's a fantastic opportunity. Our chapter as itself, in the past two years, has seen tremendous growth, not only in our total membership, but also in the competition areas that we are competing in, and our excellence in those categories, as seen with much higher attendance of the international competition and success of our members. So, again, we wanted to capitalize on this by attending this event and other events that we're expanding to, but we're seeing about 15 members, not including myself, because I would be attending... I would be attending under the Massachusetts State Association, but our chapter itself would be seeing around 15 members, plus our two business teachers, Mrs. Anderson and Mrs. Truby. And we think that these members, who are mostly juniors and some sophomores, would see great opportunities to grow not only in their education, in the areas of business, but also in networking and other opportunities that they'll be able to have. And again, we think this is a great opportunity for our chapter to continue to grow and for our members to be more engaged and learn more. So we were just hoping to get that approved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, Mr. Gallagher and I recommend the school committee vote to approve the DECA leaders, and that's, again, sophomores and juniors and seniors, to attend the DECA Power Trip in Washington, DC over the weekend of November 11th through 13th.
So moved.
Any additional discussion?
I guess I'll ask my usual question, you guys need another chaperone?
Yeah.
I wouldn't personally know the exact specifics, but I'm sure we'd be happy to have an additional chaperone.
Mr. Gallagher, very well spoken.
Yes.
Excellent job.
You guys do great work.
Yeah, very impressed. So I'll go ahead and, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
That's guys and girls.
I'm in favor, so it's 5-0-0. And again, very, very well done, your presentation was very well done, and thank you very much, and thanks for your patience. I knew you were here for some reason.
I very much enjoyed being here. It's always good as a student to see how the actual governance of our whole public system here and our education system actually works. I definitely enjoyed it, and I'm definitely happy to speak here on behalf of DECA, and I think I'll probably end up speaking again some point before the end of this year.
Hopefully with a good presentation after you attend.
When you come back to tell us about all your awards.
Exactly, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so let's go back to new hires profile update.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for your flexibility. And again, just to the point about MCAS is, what you just witnessed was a much more authentic learning opportunity, and so appreciate your support of that and many of the other opportunities that this district supports and affords their students, so thank you. The new hires profile, again, just, I want to link everything back to the plan, learning, equity, thriving. When we talk to our students, I think, and when we look at research, one of the things that is consistent is they want to see people who look like them in different roles. Diversifying our staff is certainly a priority. And so, again, one of the metrics I would like you to see in October moving forward would be of sort of the hiring that we have accomplished, and we're just going to be spending some time looking at our hiring process, and we did some of that work already. What does that look like? People who are participating on hiring committees, they're required to go through an anti-bias training exercise before they meet candidates, before they're participating. There's other things that if we can encourage more applicants of color, having one, more than one applicant of color in a pool usually ends up with better, with better results. So again, I feel like we started this journey, and we prioritized looking certainly at talent first, but then looking to diversify, and diversity means a lot of different things at different levels. But I think I shared with you, of the folks who are new to Burlington, of the folks we hired, this isn't necessarily internal transfers, about 22% of our new hires were non-white, and I think for us in Burlington, that was, again, first time we're really tracking this, but I think it was, I can tell you anecdotally, having been here for a while, was a significant improvement over prior years. So again, commitment from me is that this is important, and also that we'll be keeping track of that and reporting to the school committee. The majority of our hiring obviously happens in the spring and summer, so October will be the time that we report this data to the school committee. But I think looking at metrics in terms of supporting our plan, this is not something that is going to be a light switch change in Burlington. We don't have a whole lot of turnover, which is actually a positive thing, but we're certainly going to be mindful of trying to diversify our, all of our staff throughout the district.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Ms. Simon?
I would like it if, I'd like to request that you and perhaps the HR director, and maybe you're already doing this, be looking at if there were things we did differently this year, or if there were factors that were different this year, so that we can replicate this increase in diversity in our hiring. Because as you said, we don't always have turnover, but when we do, we want to be sure that we're doing our hiring and recruiting and retention in ways that are going to be attractive to a diverse set of candidates that can come and present their talent to us. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you. Dr. Conti, any other comments on that?
No, we're, obviously, we're actively having those conversations, so thank you.
So the next item is substitute rates.
I believe the committee already voted on all of them, I just would like to make one amendment, in that I had a group of longtime Burlington educators, they're retired, they asked for more running, more compensation just to recognize their expertise and their experience in the district, and I agreed with them. I do think they bring a value, not only of their talent in terms of education, but I also think they help, they help communicate the values that I think make this district sort of what it is. I think that having them in the buildings really sets the tone for some folks who are new to the district. So recommended that we increase the pay for the retired teachers who are coming back into our classrooms to $150 a day. So Nicole wanted me to ask you to, for a vote.
And that's up $25.
$25.
Yes, okay, I just wanted to make that clear to people who didn't know.
I would like to make that motion.
Okay.
I will second that motion.
All right, any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm in favor, so 5-0-0.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, the next items are facilities, finance. Dr. Conti?
Again, metrics that we're looking at, part of our metrics are going to be monthly in regards to finance. I believe Nicole is with us. So Nicole, I'll turn this over to you. This is the first for fiscal 23 of the monthly financial report to the school committee.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Conti. Through the chair.
Thank you.
So for...
Our revolving fund summary, we currently have no deficit, no accounts in deficit. All of our accounts are in good standing. School lunch has a pretty good balance, as you'll see there. And one of the reasons for that is the SSO program that has operated during COVID, during which all students received free lunch, and the district received a higher reimbursement rate for meals purchased during that time. And again, as of, I think, conveyed in prior meetings, the cost of school, of food and other commodities of school lunch, this account may dwindle quickly, so that's something that we're going to keep an eye on. And then also, just one other thing that sort of might stand out to others, the receipts for the international studies, you'll see a negative receipt there of $7,250, and this is just, we receive the revenue for our international students through this account in advance, and this was a student that was unable to attend for this year, but we had received the revenue in a prior year, that's why you're seeing the negative in the receipts column there. And that's pretty much all that I wanted to highlight for our revolving fund summary for operating and accommodated. As I'm sure everyone understands, in September, we still have a lot of moving parts with hiring and coverage for the new school year. So this first financial update is essentially like the current worst-case scenario, and next month's will be more refined with actuals on the salaries portion of the report as we move to nail down all of our coverages and new hires for the year. But again, no concerns as of this point, and all accounts are in good standing.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I have a quick question. Did we post the financial statements anywhere?
Yes, that's the intention, is we will, again, once they're through the committee, then we'll post them after the, after tonight.
Okay, where can they be located for those who would like to find them?
I think, I'll double check, but I think they're in the school committee section, and we'll create sort of a monthly financial tab if people are having trouble, so we'll try to make sure it's highlighted and...
Okay. I was approached by someone, that's why I'm asking.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
There's an operations and finance section, and that's, they're all located under the fiscal year.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Appreciate that. All right, so, oh, yes, Ms. Moran?
Yeah, I did have one question. So the school lunch program, the free school lunch program will continue until how long? For how long? Through the end of the calendar year or the school year?
School year, as far as I know.
Yeah, I think it's the school year.
Ms. Kasha, do you know?
It was extended.
It was extended through the end of the school year.
Ms. Kasha, do you have the answer to his question?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
When does the free school lunch program end?
So for, on the federal level, it ended last fiscal year, but the state has extended it for Massachusetts for this fiscal year. So as of right now, it's through 6/30 of 23, but through the state, not on the federal level.
Okay, thank you.
And just through the chair, we are advocating that the state continue to do that, and maybe something MASC also brings up at their joint conference.
That'd be good.
Okay, definitely.
I also have a question about the free lunches. So does that mean that all students, is there any money collection in the cafeterias now? Is it for additional, you know, if you want to buy an extra something, or is it that there's no one using, you know, being charged for any lunch? Is that how, when you say free lunch, what's, what does that mean?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So I believe that it's just our, the school lunch and breakfast program, and I'm not sure, and Bob may be able to intervene on this, if we're offering à la carte at this time, and I know we weren't during COVID, but if we're offering à la carte, those might be the only additional charges that we may collect revenue for.
Thank you, Ms. Kasha.
A follow-up question. So on the warrant, I noticed that we are, we were paying PayPAMs for a monthly fee, so is that a holding fee, or what would we be using PayPAMs for if students are not paying for lunch items?
Ms. Kasha?
I'd have to check on the exact charge on that. It may be a holding fee, I'd have to double-check our contract and what we're, what charge we're being assessed for on that, but I can, I can email you a response on that.
Okay, I believe it was in August.
August charge, just if that helps you find it. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and Ms. Monica?
I believe, I could be wrong, but I believe that the lunch is the, is the approved lunch that falls under all the categories, and that if there are any extras or à la cartes, the students are paying, and therefore they would still use the PayPAM.
They're, they don't have, Mr. Kuna just said there's no à la carte.
So they don't buy cookies? You mean the state's paying for all that stuff?
So, we are making certain breakfasts and certain lunches, and that's being provided. We don't have any additional à la carte items. We're a cashless system anyway, so anything that we would be selling wouldn't be cash received, it would be through either PayPAMs or PCS system. But right now, we're not collecting that. I'm not saying that it hasn't ever happened, and it hasn't happened maybe throughout, but we've had some pandemic practices, and we're slowly getting back to that. So again, if I'm saying something incorrect, it could be more recent, but in the past two years, we've moved away from the à la carte, and like I said, we're transitioning back to that.
Well, the messages are coming in.
Okay.
Extra drinks, second helpings, kids pay if they want more than the standard-issue food. So I imagine that's why we still need the PayPAM.
Thank you.
If I could just correct...
They want two lunches, they pay something for the second one.
We still use PayPAMs to process the students as they run through anyways, so we use that as our point-of-sale system, and we also use that for our allergy check as well. So there still would be a yearly fee on that and any software updates, not including any charges that would take place.
Thank you.
Don't they still have, like, ice cream bars and, you know, Mrs. so-and-so's cookies and all that stuff? What good is lunch without that stuff?
I guess not, not very good, I guess. I don't know. Okay, all right, so can we move on from financials, and we'll go to the Fox Hill School Building Committee update?
I have no news to update, I'm sorry, through the chair. We have attended the board meeting that happened on October 3rd, and we are waiting for either a letter of recognition, acceptance, or approval from MSBA on our OPM choice. To this date, I have not or am aware of us receiving any notification or any challenges to our OPM selection. So I believe we're just waiting to receive that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can update just a tiny bit on the call. Bob and I were on the call with the project, the team that we selected, I think the questions were pretty positive. They have a project management team and an architecture team, so the state was just making sure there was no conflict of interest there and how they plan to manage that. And then they asked us about our interest in a model school, and that was it. It was very, it was much quicker than I was anticipating, so we're just waiting for the letter.
Okay, so next item is the BHS update.
Again, through the chair. No news to update currently, except for the varsity field at Burlington High School. Fingers crossed, should be done this week in time for the game on Friday, which would be a home game, the first one played on that field this year during the season. So we're right there. As you can see, when you drive past it, everything from letters in the end zones to the new logo on the field, it does look great. It's really just those final touches before we can actually have students and staff practicing and planning on it. So that's it.
Thank you. And the next item is a BHS building renovation committee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This was added to the agenda, I think it was a suggestion by the committee, and we can certainly discuss having a Burlington High School Building Committee even without MSBA as a partner. We can certainly follow some of the MSBA strategies, functions, structures with a Burlington High School Building Committee. One suggestion that I would like to make is, this conversation may be a little bit premature in that I was hoping to have an OPM approved by MSBA, because I think one of the things that makes the building committees work is that there's an OPM sort of lending expertise and sort of moving the process along. I think one of the suggestions that came from Mr. Denizio is that we look at the OPM that we selected for Fox Hill, and we ask them, I think our contract, and Nicole's on the call, I think our contract allows us to approach them about expanding their scope of services, and we talk to them about helping us through, look at the high school sort of holistically, and almost, again, helping us replicate a MSBA-like process with this, with this committee, and they give us a price, a price for doing that. Because I think with the high school especially, it's important that we have expertise looking at all of the systems, and I think we felt that at last year's town meeting when we were looking for money to do some individual projects at the high school, and I think town meeting was really pushing back and saying, you know, how do we know this money is well-spent? you know, how do we know this money is well-spent at this time in the sequence of all the things that needs to be done at the at the high school? We all know the boilers and the HVA system needs to be replaced. But again, does it make sense to do that? And as many of you have often said, if the ceilings are all ripped out, do we do other things while that's all happening? So I like the idea of a high school building committee. Again, I would suggest that. But what I would almost like to do, in terms of we can discuss that, but I'm not sure anyone's going to argue that we don't need one, what I'd really like to do is get Doran Whittier approved, and then approach them, and then come back to the committee with a proposal about what the cost would be and what they would recommend for us in terms of moving that forward without MSBA as a partner.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. Any questions or comments, Ms. Simon?
I I'm certainly willing to wait till we have Doran Whittier on board and have that conversation. I think it's a really good strategy. I also know that if we wait till that's all resolved, and then we start to have a conversation about who do we want on a building committee, that it then takes an extra month or two after that. So I would like us to be ready to do in tandem a little bit of the getting the building committee settled set. In other words, I don't need us to decide tonight. But if, you know, if when we begin to have a conversation with the Fox Hill OPM about expanding their scope of services, even before they're ready to do it, maybe that would be a time, not till they've already given us a suggestion of what they should be doing. So I I just, it, everything takes a long time. And there's lots of things that we need to be patient for, and there's other things that we could be more efficient at. And I think this is one of them. I think we need to have that building committee in place when we're ready to have that conversation with an OPM. So what it's that we have another meeting in October. We only have one in November. We only have one in December. So I'd like us to be forward-thinking. I don't know how bold those agendas are going to be. But I and I think that we are going to want to have a conversation. So I just want to be sure that sometime in the next two months, that there's an opportunity for us to have that conversation. We can decide, we don't want to decide it then. But I would like us to have the opportunity to decide it at that point.
Thank you, Ms. Simon.
Madam chair, may I just ask, Nicole, Nicole still on the call? I just want to make sure I wasn't misspeaking about the agreement with Doran Whittier that we could approach them about expanding the scope?
Yes, I saw. No, I don't, I don't think that's beyond the scope. But I was waiting to have those conversations until MSBA had had approved and we moved forward with them. So I hadn't had any discussions with them yet about moving forward with the high school.
Thank you, Ms. Kasha.
But again, Nicole, I'm sorry, I had trouble hearing you. You're saying the contract that we that if MSB approves, we enter into a contract that would allow us to approach them about expanding their scope?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I'm sorry. I missed that the first time. So so again, I think, I just think to Ms. Simon's point, I think, in order for us to make progress, I do think some expertise at the table in pushing us will really help. So I think that's, I just think it's important to, especially with a building this size and this age, and there's nothing inexpensive about about changing any of this. And I do think it's important that we do it efficiently. And the conversation with town meeting really had an impact on sort of my thinking moving forward, and would really want the support of the sequencing and the expertise that goes along that goes along with that. So anyway, so Ms. Simon, I hear you that we can't wait and wait and wait, but would really want some expertise at the table, or else I think, I think it would really show a commitment also that we're we're really serious about moving the moving the project forward. And we're still going to apply to MSBA. We're still going to sort of continue to to try. But I think if we're investing in in an OPM, they know our community. They're all going to, they're already going to be having programming conversations at the elementary level. Clearly, there was a very mixed representation of people who liked this particular OPM. Again, so I think the selection process was positive. And if we can approach them, and I just think it would be the way to go.
Thank you, Dr. Conti, and I I agree. I like that process, I like the way you're thinking on that, too. So you want to table this until another meeting?
Yeah, I'd like to just add that, I mean, we could have a discussion tonight about who we want on that committee, even though we don't have a letter signed with Doran Whittier and don't know if they'll accept an expansion, so that the committee is ready. So I don't play, I don't want us to do that tonight. But that's the way I'm thinking about it. We, I'd like us to have that committee ready, so that as soon as we're ready to talk, that we can do it. Thank you.
All right, so we'll we'll table this until another, any kind of vote until another meeting. So at this point, sure.
Thank you, madam chair. And Mr. Kuna, I apologize, this is two items ago, but your discussion about varsity field made me think about the communication we had from local residents. And so my question is, as soon as varsity field is done, how quickly will all groups move back to their regular practice areas? If you get what I mean? I'm not trying to name anybody, but there are some that are particularly louder than others.
No, I think then, I think the noise level, we would move, we would start, once the field is ready, we'll start using, we'll we'll start using the facility full-time.
Beauty.
So again, I think the the percussion section will will move closer to root three.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So the next item is a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I don't think there'll be any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm in favor, 5-0-0. This meeting has ended.